Director Hockert?
Here.
Director Kelsenberg?
Here.
Director Petrie?
Here.
Director Corbenny?
Here.
Director Riley?
Here.
Director Patava?
Here.
Chair Sherman?
Here.
You have a call.
Great. All right, I'm going to look for a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Director Petrie and Director Kelsenberg, second. All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, we are here to discuss the interviews and the reference checks from last night, and also ultimately select our final list. I want to start this out first with just a little bit of background. I mean, we've started this process, it feels like a long time ago, but it's been fast and furious. I want to thank MSBA and John and Barb. Your guidance along the way has been invaluable for everyone, so thank you very much. Just a special shout out to a couple people who have been working tirelessly, and the community can't see them, but Joan and Cindy, thank you guys both so much for being a steadfast presence here and just everything you do behind the scenes. Just want to thank the board because you guys have put in a lot of time and a lot of effort into this, and we all take the responsibility very seriously, and I think that's been demonstrated time and time again at the board table, so thank you to each of you. And last but not least, our community, the people that attend these meetings, the people that took the survey, the stakeholder survey initially, and just the people who have reached out to us privately via email or phone calls or just when we're out and about. Everyone here greatly appreciates that, so just kind of a few thank yous that I wanted to make. Just setting this up, I want to reiterate, and I know that MSBA has told us this time and time again, but we had excellent candidates. I mean, this, we, I feel very privileged to be in the position that we are tonight, making a decision between very qualified final four. So I just wanted to kind of let the community know that it was, we were lucky. I mean, we were very lucky and fortunate, and any one of these candidates would be excellent for our schools or any district, so really not a bad decision to make here. So, right now, in looking last night at the EMD results, I'm seeing between the last time we met and last night's results that there is a clear frontrunner that is seeming to get quite a bit of consensus on the board. I don't know, I know we, there's more to the decision than just that, but that is, has been a pretty comprehensive look for both the interviews and all the questions that we've asked. We also have the references and the letters and the resumes and the work history, but I really wanted to know upon reflection from last night, is anyone feeling maybe differently and that there isn't a consensus around our pick? Does anyone want to kind of? With that, I would like to make a motion, and then I think that it would be great if the will is out there for a second, and then to have a discussion to kind of go around about where we are as a board, if that's acceptable. So I would like to move to extend the offer of an employment contract for the position of Stillwater Area Public Schools ISD 834 Superintendent to Dr. Michael Funk, contingent upon the following, that a mutually agreeable employment contract is negotiated and a criminal background check is completed with results acceptable to the school board. Is there a second to that motion?
I will second that.
Okay. Director Hockert? So now discussion, and I thought, I mean, we all know this is a really difficult decision, and like I said, all great candidates, but I thought we'd maybe go around and just kind of talk a little bit about our thoughts and process. Director Hockert?
Thank you. Dr. Michael Funk was definitely my frontrunner after last night's interviews, and I was particularly impressed with his experience in navigating some unpopular decisions, and being able to do that with decisiveness and being able to realign resources in a way that best serves kids. It really came across that that was really the central goal of everything he does, and in reading through the letters recommendation that he added to our resources last night for his Superintendent of the Year application, it became very obvious that there are lots of people in his district who really do attest to and do support his work. And he is a proven leader, and I believe that he will be a good fit for this district, so I do appreciate that he is being moved forward as our best candidate.
Director Vodova?
I guess I agree with what Katie said. We said as our, what we were looking for, we were looking for a creative visionary leader, and I think he matches that. He's had a vision for the school district he was in, and then he implemented it. I think it's great to have a vision, but it's even better if you can implement your vision. I think he's direct, and I think he has been using curriculum and other resources to improve his district, and we need that here. He has, he has had a communication plan, and so he's made it very clear, and he's communicated with the community, and he's become part of his community with different groups, and I think that's really important for our community, to bring our community together, since there's so much, there has been so much division here. And I think he also has the knowledge and experience of levees and building bonds and working with a population that's getting more and more diverse in his district. It's very similar to our situation, so I guess I concur with this decision.
Director Riley?
So I, in my perceptions upon interviewing and watching, you know, the days that I had missed, that he seems to be a humble person. I appreciate that. I like that he is trained in leadership and understands leadership. We need leadership to take us to the next level. I like his conversations regarding standards and teaching about history and not judging and blaming, but listening to all perspectives. And for him, I like that he used the words perceptions versus judgments, so it is an absolutely inclusive environment for everybody that's in attendance to learn. I liked how he, I like how he included the family in decision-making and considers them part of the three-legged stool, and he utilized that in his definitions. For me, that was very, it was a very loud statement in a very divisive time, and I think it was important, and will be important for our families to know that they will be listened to and heard and included in those decision-makings, and I liked his good depth of finance knowledge, so.
Director Kelsenberg?
Sure. So in my list of notes, I got a couple highlights that struck with me. When we were doing the interview yesterday, we had our list of questions, and you know, when you're asking the question, you kind of anticipate the answer you might get, and you kind of wait for it, but in every single question, he surprised me with something. He had something unique that I hadn't considered, and I go, wow, that was, that was good. And then I think he really has a good balance between collaboration and decisiveness. You know, you can't be on one all the other, but it's a good balance there. And then one other thing, I think he has a really good understanding of industry trends and what it's going to take to get our graduates ready for that when they leave the high school and go on into industry, if that's what they do, and he's ready to prepare them for that, so, thank you.
Great. Yeah, thank you. I think there's no question that he's very qualified in terms of his experience. For me, what I was looking for was someone who can actually project hope, and I think he brings that to the table. He's one who presents, he gives you, he gives you an opportunity to see beyond what is possible. And I think, like Director Riley said, his ability to stay humble and his presentation in such balanced temperament gives you hope. And so for me, that was what I was looking for, is that behavior competency in terms of how he presents, but also you look just behind the statements that he makes. It's easy for anyone to present in terms of what their experiences are, but I think for him, he projected way beyond that for me, and so I was looking for something completely different, which I found in him. So that ability to give you hope even when there is none. So that ability to actually project in ways that makes you feel everything is possible is what he presented. So for me, he was a candidate for me, especially with respect to what all of our collective mindset is, wanting to project our kids so they can hope, they can think beyond what their capabilities are right now, think as a person.
Director Petrie?
Well, I agree. You all have had such great things to say about him. I have nothing left to say, but I actually do want to just reiterate what Chair Sherman said, in the sense that we had an extraordinary group of candidates. I am humbled and proud that so many really qualified people wanted to come and be our leader here. It was, it was, it was an incredible group of four that we interviewed last night. You know, I too was impressed with so many things about Dr. Funk, and you know, he has, in Albert Lee, he has dealt with a significant rise in the, in the amount of diversity in that community, and I think that that is, you know, considering what is happening in this district right now, that is an experience that we can draw upon that I think will lead us forward. And when he was talking about, I was really struck by a comment that he made in dealing with students, he said, you know, you have to help all students, you have to help each student. And I liked the fact that he made the distinction that when you're, when you're trying to help all students, it's the system, right? And you have to create good systems to make sure that you are serving all students in a district. But then he, but then he, you know, made the distinction that for each child, you have to look at each child and see what each child means. So it's a two-pronged approach to helping raise up students. So, you know, others were talking about his financial acumen, and I think that, you know, he's definitely been proven there. So, so at any rate, I'm, I'm actually, I'm delighted that we were so easily come to consensus here.
Yeah. I, again, just reiterating everything that's been said at the table. I kept with every candidate, and again, we were so fortunate to have amazing candidates, but I kept going to our profile and the community profile, and I think that all the boxes were checked. I mean, collaborative leadership, I think he has a good balance. He knows when to collaborate and when the work needs to get done and when to check in along the way. And so I thought that was, you know, I kind of marked that off. The budget and the finances goes without saying, it's years of experience, and for me, you don't, he's been in one district for 13 years. I mean, that is not an easy feat to do, and so he's obviously proven that, both that collaboration and that budget and operating skill set. I think that the diversity, equity, and inclusion piece, because he's lived that change that we're kind of going through, he'll bring a really hands-on approach full of ideas and best practices. I liked one of his examples yesterday, because it's a lot of what we read where our staff, the acknowledgement that staff is struggling and that they've had a hard year, and his approach was not to kind of just give one day off or, you know, a short-term fix, or, but it was really to kind of, how can we work with staff to provide one day a week, and it's something that's, something people, the staff can rely on, and it's kind of a long-term solution to, to the problem that our staff is facing. So I appreciated that. I think that one thing that I just wanted to kind of maybe read or share with the public that was a part of his strategic plan, because it just kind of encapsulated what I think he's about. It says, this is in relation to refreshing and redoing some of our strategic planning. Some potential areas of system coherence to consider include prioritizing the learning of our staff, identify critical subcomponents of the graduate profile so staff can define characteristics to evaluate as we focus on individual student needs, ensure all staff and students' social, emotional needs are met, invest in early learning programs so our students who enter kindergarten begin on a similar playing field. And I just thought that that was a really comprehensive set of statements there. And again, he just had example after example of being that kind of proven leader that I think that the community, I hope, rallies behind. I know that we're as a board are ready to rally behind. And, yeah, and I think that his ability to kind of lead us through that strategic planning process will be, it'll be phenomenal. I fully support this. So I'm glad we're, we're meeting a consensus, and I know it's been a long process of listening to candidates and going through notes, and I've been talking to, you know, people, it's like constant reflection back, and so I'm just thrilled with the work and the output here, so. Does anyone else have anything to add?
I think we have to spend at least five more hours before we...
Yeah, exactly. I don't know if we want to, if we're ready to take a vote? Do we feel like we are, if we don't have anything? Okay. So the motion again is to extend the offer of employment contract for the position of Stillwater Area Schools Superintendent to Dr. Michael Funk, contingent upon the following, that a mutually agreeable employment contract is negotiated, a criminal background check is completed with results acceptable to the school board. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Great. All right. Let's go back to the agenda. So I think at this point Cindy and I are going to exit the room. If we could take a five-minute recess, we're going to call Dr. Funk and let him know of the board's decision, and talk to him about, a little bit about what that process will look like and the background check, and then I'll come back and we'll report to you guys. Is that okay? Okay, great. We'll take a five-minute recess. Thank you.